Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, January sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. And we wish everybody a happy morning and hopefully you're keeping nice and warm and toasty inside somewhere, so. Bear with it, it looks like we're gonna get a break in temperatures here in a week or so, but three, four days, but. Actually, the end of January looks like it's gonna be in the mid thirties. Yes, they're all saying, so, no, it's been a little tough on everybody, we appreciate your patience and stay with us. First on our agenda this morning, we'll have a public hearing, so we will open a public hearing on three hundred and eighth Street P C C paving plans. Todd, is there anything you'd like to go over? I have not received any calls, I have received a few letters of support.
We got a couple emails, no comments on the plans specifically, but there was one email. That the individual's asking for guard rail to be considered as part of the project, but. I responded that it's not part of this original project. Because we're not doing substantial amount of grading, if you recall, we were, we were not regrading this for paving, we're basically. Paving what's there with slight profile, vertical profile changes, so. We could possibly look at guard rail in the future, but it's not part of the scope of this project, so. It wasn't part of the assessment district either, which was funding fifty percent.
I apologize, I did not have the opportunity to go out and do that because I did see that email come through also and I. I don't, I don't know what it all takes into consideration there, but.
Yeah, so we, we're not gonna change the scope of this project because the, the, the fifty fifty funding was based on the scope that these plans represent.
Anyone else have any calls, complaints, consideration?
Just emails.
I said, I seen a few, like I said, a support letter, but is there anyone else here that would like to speak to the project? Hearing none?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and second to close the public hearing on three hundred and eighth Street P C C paving plans, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carried. And second on our agenda is Mr. Tax Keen here, Jackson County Engineer, and, and Jayden has joined him today. Our Assistant Engineer. Good morning, gentlemen.
Do we? We gotta take action on that.
I would say that you requested that this be done by resolution, so. There is a resolution that was prepared today, it is one thousand and five dash zero one dash sixteen dash twenty twenty-four. And that is a resolution for the three hundred and eighth street paving plans. And she prepared this.
Looking for motion approved.
So, do you have anything to add to that?
No, this is just a requirement under chapter twenty-six of bidding laws, so you, because we're over the bid threshold, you have to approve the bid documents by. By whatever, I guess, resolution, you have to approve them, so then we can go out the letting and so.
Okay. Is that a motion done?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the three hundred and eighth street paving P C C as presented. And resolution number one zero zero five dash zero one dash one six dash twenty twenty-four, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carried.
So the next item are just a couple resolutions that. Typically, typically get passed each year, one is the authority for the county engineer office to close roads as needed, like for emergency conditions, and the other one is. We're moving on.
Um, are you gonna pass this speed limit resolution?
Oh, is that next?
Well, there, we had a discussion yesterday concerning if you approve the plans. That then you should also approve the speed limit resolution at the same time because you have to, because of the plans, you have to approve the speed limit.
Not necessarily, but we can.
It's prepared.
We had it prepared.
Yeah, so really, we don't need to establish the speed limit till, till the actual road is constructed, but we can do it.
According to what I guess, if that's in your notes, do you want to just approve that, approve that in your section, because it's not in yours?
Well, so that was the question, we, Jayden and I, excuse me, Shelley had quite a discussion yesterday afternoon. So that was, you know, one, one happens because of the other, it sounds like, and that's why we prepared it. You directly what you'd like me to do.
Yes, we probably wouldn't put the signs up till the road is constructed. So, in either case, I'm fine with either, we can, we can definitely do it now, I'll just save us doing it later.
So you have a prepared in conjunction, one resolution to change your sign and we, or structure it, or you have one in front of the other.
So what we discussed yesterday with Jayden was that with the plans, the plans because of the way that the road is now constructed. That it will require a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, so that's why.
We prepared, really, you can get much over thirty-five in that distance, so.
But that's why we prepared resolution one thousand and ten.
So the, the, the design standards we use for this paving are based on its design speed of that. So that's why we wanna set the speed limit, because it's not designed for fifty-five miles an hour. So, yeah, we can do it now, definitely, let's do it now.
So if, yeah, if it doesn't matter, we surely can, because I can remember last paving project, we did not do the speed limit until after it was poured.
Because, you know, it would not take into effect until the project is done. But you can, you can set and establish the speed limit ahead of time, that's not an issue.
I make a motion that we pass the resolution.
Because it's not, it's not a fightable offense until the signs are up anyway.
Okay, so let's have a little more, okay, I got a motion.
And this is to approve the resolution one thousand and six oh one sixteen twenty twenty-four. Dropping the speed limit from fifty or fifty-five down to thirty-five.
Is this on three hundred and eighth still?
On the paved portion of the three way.
Isn't it thirty-five now?
It's thirty-five now.
This will make it super thirty.
This is for thirty-five then.
So I have a motion and a second to approve lowering the speed limit to thirty-five mile an hour on three hundred and eighth street as presented, any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Isn't it technically a residential area, shouldn't it be twenty-five miles an hour? I live at three seven nine seven six three hundred and eighth street, my name's Bill Perrin. And it's thirty, there's a thirty-five mile an hour sign. By Daniel Bray's house.
Yeah, on three hundred and eighth, correct, and then, where, how far does it extend?
I think it's the whole street.
The whole street till it turns into level B?
Oh.
I mean, nobody observes that, I will say it.
So, in them situations, are they normally posted, like you would, we going through downtown, down twenty-five? And when it goes to thirty-five, is there another one that says thirty-five? So, so when you go out that county road, it's gonna say twenty-five, when you come off of fifty-two. And then a mile later, it's gonna say thirty-five or forty-five, whatever it is, I've never seen.
It's thirty-five.
If they're, have a sign posted. Thirty-five and. You don't have a sign that says something different.
Fifty-five, as I said, they're posted, they, they are, and then it's forty-five at night, but, uh, look, if you want, let, don't take action, and we'll verify where the zone is, because if we. Right now, it's written the, to establish it for the, just the paved portion, and I don't wanna change it. If we don't need to, and if it's thirty-five, the full length, I can imagine it's thirty-five on the level B, but maybe it is. We, well, let's just hold off on that, and then we'll, we'll, we'll get, figure out exactly where the, if it's. There could be signs up, but if there's no resolution to support it, it's not legal.
Okay.
So let's, let's, we'll, we'll do some more research and get it figured out.
Well, if they're not, if they're signs up and they're not legal, do we wanna pass a resolution just to make it?
Well, we're gonna get right though, if we're gonna get it from twenty-five from the highway end, past the paved portion. And then if it's gonna be thirty-five or forty-five, whatever it might be. I, I see no reason for that to be thirty.
I don't know what. I think residential is only twenty twelve, assume twenty-five in the city limits, that's correct. And this isn't in the city limits, I don't think that rule applies if it's posted thirty-five.
I would say it's thirty-five, and I don't see any reason why you can't go forward with passing this. Because if you guys didn't know it was thirty-five, this will make it be legally thirty-five.
And we'll define it to the end of the paper, which then becomes fifty miles an hour, which is what everybody drives anyway, so it actually makes it real.
So, again.
If, if you wanna hold off, we can.
I, I, I would like a little sell, a little more details in the resolution to say, start, stop. This, this, whatever it may be, because we got three different things going on here, and that one road resolution that's.
The resolution is for the pavement segment.
It specifies the paved portion. Lineal feet, fourteen hundred and eighty feet to the end of the P C C paving, that's the zone, so it, it's delineated in the resolution now. But my point is.
For thirty-five.
For thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
But again, is it thirty-five, the rest of the way to the level B? And then what is it, because that, there's three different kinds of roads here in one road. You're gonna have a paved portion, you're gonna have a gravel portion, and you're gonna have a level B yet.
But that doesn't have, to me, what you're saying is not gonna have anything to do with the actual project itself. The project itself is going up to the pavement end.
Can you tell me exactly where the pavement is gonna end? Is it at the culvert or?
Before the culvert.
Before the culvert.
Just before the culvert.
Does it go past our driveway?
Now, if your driveway's past.
Is your driveway past the culvert?
It's before, we are the property that the culvert is on, so we, is it go, I think it goes past our driveway.
I think it's between your driveway and the culvert.
Just as a clarification, because it's three tenths of a mile, correct?
Yes, fourteen hundred and what feet was it?
So when I set my little odometer at the end, three tenths goes right to the culvert.
No, you gotta step it off.
So I think this is your driveway here.
Yeah.
So the paving is right there.
Oh, okay, thank you.
What's your address again?
Three seven nine seven six three hundred and eighth street. We are technically part of the subdivision.
Okay, so.
I've turned around in your driveway a few times. Almost everybody does.
So the pavement stops.
There somewhere, yeah, it goes past their driveway.
Just past your driveway.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so.
So is it your recommendation we hold off for a week and figure this language out? Or is this specific to the project?
We can take this anytime, let's get some clarification, because. If the intent was that thirty-five be carried past this, because of whatever site distance or vertical issues. Then if there's a resolution for it, we don't, it's a done deal, we don't have to do it, we don't have to worry about it, if there isn't a resolution to support this, the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit. Then we will come back and use, use this opportunity to pass a resolution, so they do have an enforceable speed zone.
Well, that makes sense, if there's already one in place, I mean, then you're redoing a current resolution, that's, yeah.
Yeah, so we can, we can, we can just hold off on it, that's fine.
Okay.
Reset by a second.
Table the motion.
As far as I'm concerned, there's one speed limit for the whole road.
Yeah, and I want clarification on that, though. So, do we have a motion to table this until further information, is that?
I made a motion to table the motion.
Motion and second to table the conversation around the speed limit on three hundred and eighth as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Okay. Uh, so. I mentioned earlier about the two resolutions, typically those, these are passed each year. The one is to authorization to close roads for emergency purposes, and the other one is to. To authorize the engineer's office to process vouchers. Other D O T related documents for FM and federally stated construction projects.
Okay, so we got two different items here to consider, is that correct?
That's correct.
So the first. Is possible action on the resolution to close county roads, can you tell me what that consists of?
Just it, but anyway.
Not all of them.
It authorizes the engineer's office, if there's an emergency, a washout, something else, a tree down, or whatever, it gives us authority to close a road without coming in and get a resolution from the board to close a road under emergency conditions.
Does this change resolution?
It does, so we have, actually, there's six resolutions on the table today, so by taking this off the table. This now, the resolution that we had prepared was resolution one zero zero seven, so now we're gonna have to change.
So if we tabled the other resolution, that resolution is still there, it says tabled, correct?
But it's tabled to a, a date, so it is resolution one thousand and six dash oh one dash sixteen, so if you do this, say in April. It's, it's gonna be, it's out of.
Four sixteen twenty-four.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's out of work.
Okay, so you want this in one thousand and six?
So I'm kinda, I'm, I'm kinda confused about what my minutes should say. Because if you pass this resolution on Bozeman County roads, then that becomes one thousand and six.
Good, you guys do it weird, the other resolution down. The, the speed limit one.
And then you would change, then your resolution is still be in order, so then one thousand and six would be null and void, is that?
I would say that we would put it in the book that that number was not used.
Yeah.
So we would have to.
You'd have to have it recorded that way, so you'd have a record of that number, why was it skipped, you know?
So I make a motion to vote, resolution one thousand and six dash zero one dash whatever. Sixteen dash twenty twenty-four down.
Motion and second to veto the one oh six dash zero one, or you have sixteen.
Well, technically, you're just having a roll call and you'll vote, you potentially would vote no, 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 somebody will say, yeah.
All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried, now we're back to as far as the authority of secondary roads to close county roads for emergency.
I'll second that.
Motion and second to approve resolution.
One zero zero seven.
Please, sir.
Okay.
One zero zero seven dash.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, dash. Dash zero.
It's sixteen, today is the sixteen. So it's one zero zero seven dash zero one dash sixteen dash twenty twenty-four.
That's it, one zero zero seven dash zero one dash sixteen dash twenty twenty twenty-four, as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Now, we're on authority.
To accept a farm market federal aid and state aid reconstruction, right?
Correct.
Yes.
And you fully explain that?
So it basically authorizes us to. Process vouchers for payment on FM federally jobs. Basically for construction projects.
And this passed every year, right?
Should be, yeah.
Second.
I have motion and second to approve resolution one zero zero eight. Dash zero one, dash one six, dash twenty twenty-four, as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Alright. Uh, Hybridge Road. Send this to him.
Yep.
Yeah. We want, I guess.
Okay, there, there you go. So, here's the situation. There used to be a bridge here, okay?
It's still there, what are you, what's wrong?
Oh, they went away. I try not to, so, there is a new bridge built and a, a road on a new alignment, so the issue is.
So this is Hybridge Road, right?
Yep.
And this is, okay, that, you're talking years ago, that bridge with that little zigzag was there in the, yeah, right there.
Okay, so the, the issue is, this part of the road right here is in road right of way that's never been vacated. So, we're getting. In years past, the guys have cleared this.
Is that the right of way map right there?
Yes, so the, the question is.
Thank you.
Do you want to? Continue to plow that little spur, basically, it's a long, it's a, his driveway, basically, but it's a section of the old road that was never vacated. So.
So, my question was, and I've gotten a call on this a couple different times, to, to plow this, and my question is, was there a reason why they wouldn't have vacated that years ago?
Got missed.
It, it makes no sense, it doesn't go anywhere except to their house or to their new house.
I think we have a few of these in the county, actually.
So are they aware of that?
They, the property owner?
Yeah.
The property owner is aware that they, they consider that to be county right of way, and we should be plowing the road and maintaining.
Okay, so are they aware that we may vacate?
Are they aware that we could vacate it? I doubt, I don't know, I don't know if they're familiar with that option of the county or not, my question is why it's, we're talking about it is, do you want us to pursue the vacation of it?
I would say yes.
Okay.
So, do we need action to pursue?
No, I, that just, this just gives us direction to start moving forward, because there's a whole process we gotta do.
I mean, oh, I would imagine, that's why I asked if they knew that we were gonna vacate, so they can protest vacation.
Yeah, so then.
So we would have to plow half their lane.
Yeah.
And gravel it.
Yeah, so what we would probably end up doing is vacating a portion, we couldn't vacate at all, because we need to keep some of the. We would probably keep this width all the way through here, and we'd vacate from about there over.
Is there a turnaround point?
I was gonna say, how, what's gonna work?
Yeah, I mean, are you gonna go halfway and stop, or do I go the red, the full way, because that's where they can turn around and go back out?
We would vacate this road, this, but we would maintain this part of the right of way, this is still gonna be all their driveway, this isn't gonna be.
Normal driveway then.
Yes, yes.
So we wouldn't be plowing just that little curve?
No, we would just keep enough right of way that we would need to maintain regular Hybridge Road.
So it would be thirty-three three?
Well, it's probably more than that, on a paved road, I'm gonna guess.
Well, this part isn't paved.
Well, I don't know how, do you get, can you measure that quick?
It's not paved.
They wanna.
Just.
They don't, they're.
From there over.
All the way over to the.
Yeah, so it's wider than thirty-three, but.
So that would be maintained basically like any other. Gravel road, paved road, whatever.
Yeah, so that, that.
For the driveway up to the roadway.
Yeah. So we don't maintain other people's driveways, so. But, well, really, all we need to know is, you wanna pursue vacation, we'll start the process to do that.
Yes.
Alright.
And we don't need to action for that?
I just wouldn't go through the process or start the process to vacate it if you guys weren't supportive, wanting to do.
I, I do support it.
Alright, last item. So. Another one of these. Equipment increases. It's not called a surcharge anymore, they just changed what they call it. What they're doing is they're removing six percent of the customer rebate for governmental clients, so that equates to about. Fourteen thousand dollars. That we're gonna have to. Uh, pay where we get these trucks. So it's, it's gonna be twenty-eight thousand total. Fourteen apiece, I mean, the option is, we don't buy them, say we don't want them, and then we wait two more years to get trucks, or we pay the, the, the cost increase and we get the trucks, I mean, we really don't have much choice.
I, I guess my question is, is, we have signed contracts for these trucks, right?
Yeah, but the contracts don't, it's a proposal, right, and the contracts don't. Guarantee a price like a, like say for, like a road or bridge project. That guarantees there's bonds and everything, and if they don't deliver, we, we can pull their bonds in, these are bonded projects, these are just equipment proposals. Uh, I looked, we went, looked at the next little bidder, well, the next little bidder was three hundred and ten thousand, so they're still ten thousand dollars lower. And these bids are.
So that was my question, I, what, how, what does that do to the second lowest or third lowest bidder to say?
We had two bidders, they, even with the twenty-eight thousand dollar increase, they're still, still ten thousand less than the next little bidder.
The new trucks, though.
Actually, either puts us behind the eight ball, or, yeah, I mean, like I said, you don't have a lot to win.
And what's to say, so you table these, and you wait another year, and they're gonna triple that?
Well, if we, say we wanted to say we're not gonna pay this, and we're gonna bid four trucks next year, I guarantee you, we're gonna pay more for the four new trucks, and we're gonna pay for these. And who knows when we'd get them, for that matter.
So you need a motion or anything, or you just let us know?
Uh, yeah, a motion to, I guess, that's fine, you guys typically do that, so.
Make a motion to go ahead and. Get some better judgment, continue on with the process.
I have a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four dump truck award price increase as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
So there's no way to. Contract them in a. Hold their price bid or whatever.
The county engineers group have talked about this. From what I understand, on equipment prices, they don't, they, they're, you have to sign their. Oh, what do they call it, their?
Because I thought at one time, there was like a bid proposal, and they were like guaranteeing them by a certain time, and if they weren't delivered by that time, then they had to take.
So here's the deal. They can write whatever guarantee they want, but the only way you hold them accountable of that is with a bond. So unless you bond, make them submit a bond with their bid, like I could say, I'm gonna guarantee you the truck in a year, and I'll guarantee you the price, and I sign whatever, so. That's fine, if I say, hey, I can't do it, I can't deliver the truck, I'm not gonna get it to you, what's your recourse, or you could sue us. But that's probably not gonna go anywhere, you could sue me, or if I had a bond for delivery, I could cash the bond and say, well, you didn't deliver the truck, I'm keeping your bond, that's money. So you can either sue them, or you have a bond, and nobody, if you, if you ask for a bond, you're gonna pay for it upfront.
So, so my guess is that this is lively discussion at your state. Meetings?
Well, it's, it wa, it was even more.
It's coming into play, I would think, more in the last two, three years than I had.
Eighteen months ago was very, because everybody was paying a surcharge, a steel surcharge, a tire surcharge, it was like surcharge after surcharge. Um, but that's kind of subsided, now, this is really the first one that I've. I've, uh, I've ran across here in the, probably recent, in the last six to twelve months. Hopefully, it gets to a point where, if one company is doing this, and other companies aren't, we go with the other companies. You know, if there's a precedent that a certain dealer is always asking for more money before they deliver, then let's pay a little bit more for a different, different. Model truck or make truck, and then they don't ask for it, but.
Somehow I feel like we gotta change something, either in bid process or guarantee or something, I, I, I don't know what the legal side of that would be to say. Hey, we're guaranteed this truck at this price, I.
For this time, or we're gonna deduct a thousand dollars for every thirty days or.
The problem is, you know, we're not buying off the lot, a lot of people go buy a, a car or tractor or whatever off the lot, we're, these are getting built specifically for us, we are, we are in a bid build window, like they use up one of their, their trucks that are gonna be manufactured, they slide it for Jackson County.
Right, and I agree with that, so my point is, when they get that order, it's ordered and it's gonna be paid for. You buy your material eighteen months ago, so you have it. So now, my price is the same, so I don't care what the price is today of your material, but you bought it eighteen months ago, you guaranteed me this.
Here's the problem with that, is that. So we get our bids in February or March, right, most of these guys don't get their allotment of build dates till September. So they bid something in February, based on whatever they think the prices are gonna be, and it doesn't get built, it doesn't, it doesn't get slotted to build to September, sometimes that gets pushed, right? So there's. So, there's, you know, five months, and it gets pushed to October, November, it's, it's twelve months. And if it goes into the new year like this one, they're under a different pricing schedule, is what I understand. Cause they're pricing in twenty-four versus pricing in twenty-three, actually, they're twenty-five versus twenty-four, so it, I don't know what the.
It, it depends how they gamble, I'm saying, but if they roll the dice.
It's not a gamble for them, they just.
I agreed to a price, they agreed too, but they don't have to roll to it.
Well, and if you, i- i- in the county engineers I've talked to, if they change, they've said, well, if I change my quote saying, hey, we will not accept any price increases. And what they do is they've built, they've bid in a surcharge, so they just say, okay.
So, this is what their bid is, I'm sure everybody's gonna do that, yeah, that's my question, I, I, I mean, of course, it has to be.
They build in a bid of contingency.
Yeah, and, and if the guys that don't, and the guys that don't, and they're the, they're the, the least expensive, okay. You missed, you, you order your trucks with this, this, this vendor, right? The truck's gonna get built, it's gonna get delivered, and they say, oh, by the way, you got a five thousand dollar surcharge, you say, no, we told you that you can't do that, they'll say, fine, and they'll go sell their trucks to somebody else. And you can't go back to the other guy, because you already missed his bid date.
How can they sell their truck to somebody else when we bought it and you deliver it this day?
Because you're not paying the surcharge. I guess, I get back to, the only way you can hold them, people accountable, is if number one of you, is if you buy a claim against them, or you have a bond.
Yeah.
You could ask for, start asking for bonds, but like I said, you're gonna pay for the bond upfront.
Yeah, I, 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 I tend to agree with you, we're kinda, we're kinda stuck here, I mean, I, I just think that somehow, there has to be some legal ramification in there. Or penalty to say, if this is what you agree to, I hold your word to it, I, you know, we can shake your hand, but that, you know.
I just hope the. We kinda keep track of which dealerships do this.
That's what we do.
And we can kinda know, okay, this person's a little bitter, but they have a history of, uh, we keep that in consideration, because at some point in time, you know. You, you run into it a lot with construction, we're a little bitter, well, we didn't include the color, because we didn't know what you wanted, or we didn't include this, because we didn't know what you wanted.
Didn't know you needed colors.
You know, you know, that, you know, and, uh, it's frustrating, but.
Yeah, that's kinda like what we're looking at, the next time we go to bid, we'll, we'll, we won't just be looking at price, we'll be looking at delivery, and how much, how you've been treated over the time, because it, with equipment. You're not required to take low bid by, by step, you're not required to do that, and you could go out and get a quote from one person, you don't need to get multiple quotes either. So, anyway. It is.
Yeah, it is, you know, I mean, you talked about the equipment, I mean, of course, people have used and abused here the last three or four days, and s- and some of that stuff shows up. You know, or, or do, do we take the low bids from here on, or what do we do, you know, that's something to consider.
Nice Facebook post on your page, snowblower cleaning secondary roads on Facebook.
There's one for forty-five grand, you'll buy one.
That was there.
Good price, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's like one of those things, like, you hope you never have to use it, but when you need it, they're pretty darn handy.
Kind of my comment, you don't use it very often, but. Does come in handy.
There's, there's one available in Mich- Michigan.
Let's, uh, move on.
Alright. So, real quick.
I'm gonna buy a snowblower today, that's what I'm.
It's too late, we don't need one, no, uh, uh, we had some, uh, discussions about some overtime issues that came up, just to. Make you guys aware, um.
I'm aware.
Yeah, so, technically, overtime has to be, before it is worked, it has to be approved by management. So, in years past, um, guys, if they work through their lunch break, scheduled lunch break, they would just get overtime, just like they worked through it. Um, so, uh, I talked to Rick about this, uh, before the storm, and, and we're like, well, that's fine. We can do that, we'll, we'll continue to do that, but it just needs to get approved by the road foreman. So, like, the road foreman just get on the radio and say, hey, guys, if you wanna work through your lunch break, go, if you wanna keep going, just go ahead, and you could write it down as overtime, continuous overtime. Uh, if you don't, then don't, right, well, um. That, Rick didn't approve it, some guys did work through their lunch break over the weekend, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna, for this time, we'll, we'll, we'll have them do that, if you work through your lunch break, you can get paid overtime. But in the future, basically, that needs to be approved, we can't have guys. We can't have twenty-some guys deciding by themselves whether they're gonna work through their lunch break or not.
Well, I'm sure there should be a policy or procedure, again, um. Is there a regulation, I would think, through DOT of how many hours they can work or drive, um, consecutively?
Uh, I, if there is, we're probably exempt from it anyway, for, from emergency condition, I did check with Becky. About, I thought there was something in the Fair Labor Standards Act that, if you have guys working for so many hours, you have to allow them a certain break, but she said, no, but she's gonna double check that. Um, and she also said that, if you, if they take a twenty-minute break or less for lunch, you're required to pay them through that. So, it might be, I think what I'll talk to Rick about is, if, if this happens again, and we want guys to work through their lunch break, just say, hey, make sure, if you take a break for lunch, it's less than twenty minutes. And then you get back to work, and then we're required to pay for that break as OT, so we'll, we'll probably end up doing that, and there is, is in the union contract. Overtime has to be authorized by management, that's, it's a, it's already a policy, it's already in the union contract, so.
So, I would think that would be hard to regulate fifteen to twenty minutes, but you do have, uh, now devices in the machines that show. If it was stopped for fifteen, twenty minutes, maybe he's stuck in the snowbank, I don't know, so he has lunch, yeah, I'm waiting to get pulled out, you know?
Hopefully, he doesn't get stuck to have lunch.
Well, friends, I've heard a lot of them get stuck this weekend.
So. Just because I've. Doesn't, like, Iowa law, though, kind of designate that, oh. A lunch break, they have to be, um, designated not in their work.
They have to be relieved, they have to be relieved from their duties, or you have to pay them.
So, sitting in the truck.
Anybody over the age of sixteen is not required to get a lunch break at all.
So, sitting in the truck is not necessarily relieved of your duties?
Well, as long as they're not operating the truck, I would say they probably are relieved from their duties.
But that's their designated workspace, so does it?
Just cause you're stood in your work. To maintain.
Well, no, I mean, I hear a guy's calling, I'm over here, and I'm stuck, how far away are you, well, I'm ten minutes.
Yeah, does that designate necessarily, uh, lunch time? I'm just saying, I had sixteen messages today on this topic. So. We have a lot of ticked-off guys that put in a lot of hard work this week to. The rumor was, was that they were getting hours deducted from them, and they're not happy. So, and, to me, they worked a long, hard week. And to have it kind of slapped in their face that way is at least not, not very appreciative, I guess.
Well, I think it's been passed that if they come in, I think on the weekend, you come on the weekend, and you're working, whatever it is, whether it's six, eight hours. If, if you work through the, if you're there through lunch, you're getting paid like it's straight time through, um.
Because they usually work to get it done and.
In this case, you know, they're working a full day, so it's not like, a lot of times, if they came in from seven to twelve-thirty, they just worked till twelve-thirty, get done, and then leave, and then get paid that. Uh, but this, like, the last two days, they're working like ten-hour days, so. Uh, and again, I don't have a problem having worked through lunch, I think it's good practice, especially if you're out there, continuous, just plowing and winging, just stop and take a break, um, unless you're.
Well, heck, this weekend, you could've got stuck in the snowdrift somewhere.
So, but the, the point being is that we just need to auth, the, the road foreman just needs to authorize that. So, I, hopefully, this gets, they're gonna get paid for their time.
Simple is a very, you know.
Yeah, and that's what I, we talked.
When we talk about this GPS setting, and we can see if they sat for a half an hour, all that kinda stuff, you know, what if they got a mechanical breakdown, what if they're stuck in the?
Yeah, I don't want it to automatically be, well, they, we showed they were stopped, so that was their break, they should've been smart enough to take it then. You know, that's not necessarily true, because just because their machine was stopped, doesn't mean they weren't out trying to figure out what the hell's going on.
You know, if they're stuck in the snowbank, wait for some, pull them out, eat a sandwich, but if their, their blade wing quit working, or, you know, a hydraulic hose popped off, and they're trying to get somewhere, get it fixed on, you know, um. You know, hopefully, there's some, I don't know how they report that, I, we should, I don't wanna get to the point where we're trying to get them to micromanage and write down every little glitch, you know, I had to stop for ten minutes because my, you know. I had to scrape my windows, or, you know, or, you know, or, or what, you know, or unplug my radiator, because we had a fix, so, you know, eh, you know, we, we shouldn't have to track it that way, but, uh, um.
Yeah.
I think we just need to be consistent and enforceable.
Yeah, so.
And there can't be a given, I worked through my lunch, so I should get paid for it, if they need to be specified, you gotta take a lunch, unless. Otherwise specified by road foreman, I don't know if each district can authorize that.
No, it has to be management, so, wha, how, wha, what we're gonna do in the department, and I talked to Rick, is, if they're gonna, they have to get. Authorization from the road foreman, like, say this, we get another weekend big storm or whatever. Rick just needs to come on the radio and say, hey, guys, for you guys that wanna work through your lunch break, go ahead, you can write down as overtime, and the guys that wanna stop, they can stop, we can't really force them to work through their break. We're gonna find that out, but, um, it just needs to be authorized, that's it, we can't have fifteen guys deciding whether they wanna work through their lunch break or not on their own, and, and whether they're gonna get overtime, it has to be approved.
So, after all this, what I've heard was, there's nothing really changed on the last weekend here, because you're gonna approve whatever they did, they worked to it. Now, they just need to acknowledge that they're gonna either work through it or stop.
No.
With management.
They are, they don't acknowledge anything, all they do, Rick is coming on the radio saying, guys, if you wanna work through your lunch break, it's authorized for OT, that's it. And they, and then the guys can do, do that, write down their time sheet or not.
Sounds simple.
That's the only difference.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's just for information, correct?
Yeah.
Thanks, Todd.
Yep.
Have a good day.
That's it.
No snow for a week.
They took it out of the forecast for Thursday and Friday.
Rain, they put rain in somewhere.
That's later.
One day.
Well, maybe rain will be good, it'll.
Thirty, thirty-eight, thirty-eight and rain is what I said.
Then, you know, man, the roads will be, we get, we get any freeze.
Alright, so, carrying on. Excuse me, so, moving on here, are there any visitors or citizens that would. Like to address the board at this time? Either be online or in person? Hearing none. Next on our agenda is Becky Chapin, and he lives with Townsend, uh, for Safety Committee members. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Alright.
Safety Committee. So, during our loss control visit last fall, um, from our work comp carrier, they have recommended that we reestablish a countywide safety committee, and we have done that, we've met over the last few months. Um, and, one of the things that we did as a committee, we actually talked to all the departments first, and then the committee, um, kinda narrowed down the actual membership of the committee and how it should be represented. In the end, it was decided that the committee would be represented by one member of the board, human resource, environmental health, maintenance. And then one representative from each of the departments with, um, the most risk, risk exposure, which we decided included secondary roads conservation and the sheriff. So, the appropriate way to establish the membership of that is by resolution, you know, what we kind of ordered in this resolution is that those are the departments that will represent the committee. And it will be a representative from that department, right now, Rank Hilberga serving as the sheriff, it may not always be him, but it will be somebody from that department, because that department has the most exposure. It will be one member of the governing board, right now, it's Nan, eventually, maybe it'll be one of you guys. Um, so we did draft a resolution, which I sent that out to you guys a week or so ago. Um, Shelley did give me a resolution, then I'm, this more, or a resolution number for that, so I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution one zero zero nine. Dash zero one dash sixteen dash two zero two four, approving membership of the safety committee.
Any questions, comments?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution one zero zero nine dash zero one dash one six dash two zero two four. For the approval of the general safety meeting for Jackson County, all those in favor say aye, and I oppose, motion carried.
And then, one of the first topics of discussion that we tackled was a general safety manual for Jackson County. Um, we started with the template that was provided by our work comp carrier, we reached out to all the departments to see what safety policies and practices they already had in place. Um, we kinda edited this to include some of those things, as well as some other policies that we already had, to come up with one general safety manual for Jackson County. Um, once the committee finished this, we sent it out to all departments for review, um, and input again, after we received all those back. Um, we fine-tuned it, and we are to the point where we feel it is ready for board approval. This will be a general safety manual that will cover countywide, each department, or they may have, they'll have independent policies as well, that don't go to this manual, but for the most part, like. This would be my safety manual, because I don't need a lot, like Elizabeth will have more, secondary roads obviously has more, but this will just be the base general safety manual for Jackson County. Um, so the whole committee had input on it, like I said, every department had input on it, um, and we feel like it's ready to be adopted by the board. So, we're here today to ask for a motion to approve version zero one point two zero two four, a general safety manual for Jackson County.
So, you approved the original resolution, correct, in one zero zero nine?
Yes.
What was your motion for?
The man, that was for the resolution appointing membership to the committee.
This is for the safety manual.
This is for the.
Appointing of the manual.
This is approving the actual manual.
Okay.
The safety manual.
Okay.
So, approve version zero one point two zero two four, a general safety manual for Jackson County.
So, did you change your resolution one zero one zero?
We have a resolution appointing membership to the committee?
Right.
That's done.
Yeah.
And now we're asking the board to approve.
The manual itself, it's not under a resolution.
Not under a resolution, thank you.
I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Jackson County Safety Manual as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
And that's all, yeah, we're just kinda continuing work in progress, we've got some other things coming up that we're asking the departments to do for us, for the committee to kinda review and advise, and we'll keep you posted.
Elizabeth, you didn't get to say much, but. Support team?
Somebody just talks a lot more than.
Okay, so, I too, you know, on behalf of the board, we do appreciate the work that you all put in it, and got input from, from everywhere, whether it be department heads or whoever it might be. And we appreciate the work you're doing for that, for, uh, helps our insurance rate, I would admit it.
It does, yeah, it helps us maintain a lot of the loss control credits that we have. Which there's a big number.
Appreciate it, does that, something needs to be signed, or?
Yep, and I can leave it with you, and you guys can each sign it back to me, um, I think Shelley was gonna put the resolution on paper at some point, so she'll get that to you to sign.
Great.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Lori? Are you available?
Yeah.
And did you bring support with you?
I, yeah, um, I'm gonna call up Elizabeth here in a second, well, actually, you wanna come up here now? Um, part of my departmental update that's on here, um, and I'm just, I'll just hit this first, since. That way she can leave and go back to her, because I have no idea what this is. Go on, what am I wrong then, too? You're right with this, what we talked about earlier.
Yeah.
Um. Just one of the things I wanna bring up, um, under the departmental update, we're seeing activity in Dressler subdivision. Where people are wanting to tear down, say, an old cabin, for instance, sixteen feet wide, thirty-some feet long, and replace it with. Nothing extravagant, but forty, say forty feet wide, and with the garage and everything on, the complete structure would be like sixty-six feet. Um, I've also heard from other people in that subdivision, with water coming in, they're wanting to tear down the small cabins and build, um, house, regular dwellings. Um, for year-round use, which is allowable up there, it's a zone R one, and it's not a seasonal, seasonal place.
Provided setbacks.
Which is a big issue.
Yeah.
Um, hardly, hardly anybody's gonna be able to build in there without a variance. Without a variance from the Board of Adjustment from zoning and septic issues.
So, right now, we have a resolution in place from the Board of Health, saying that nobody can, you know, have a variance for a well in septic. So, there's been a lot of talk out there, where, oh, once the water comes in, maybe the board lift that variance restriction, and we can start building bigger and doing this and doing that, so I'm getting a lot of that. People that want to build like Lori mentioned, and it's problematic, because still half of the houses down there don't have room for even a holding tank. So, I had gone to her and said, hey, I think it's a good idea if we put a permanent restriction on this. Where people can't build bigger, because all it's doing is taking my time, her time, board members' time, you know, to look at something that really isn't doable. So. I mean, we're already gonna be facing the problem with trying to replace septic systems on properties that have a house sitting as it. So, I mean, we're already gonna be facing the problem with trying to replace septic systems on properties that have a house sitting as it is. So, you know, when people come to us and they wanna build a house the size of their property and then don't understand why they can't put a septic system there, it's it's just it's really challenging, time consuming. I think there needs to be a restriction.
So if we do a restriction is divided to the point where somebody is legal to tear part of it down or make it bigger, does have the setbacks, and so are we not, we're not restricting them, correct?
I would say if they can meet the setbacks without a.
So it has to be worded somehow to say, you have to be within required.
Right now, at the Board of Health, we have no variances will be required.
There's no variances allowed.
Allowed.
Right, so however, there are some homes that have failing septic systems down there, but there's, they can't fit them. So to me, that's an emergency, and then there should be a variance granted or something like that. Otherwise, their house becomes, I mean, they can't live there anymore. They can't even, you know, go and have.
Big name.
Yeah. Um, so I think for for that case, yeah, we should allow variances once, you know, we get the water.
If you could come up with a viable solution to a septic system that will suffice the property.
Right.
Without being twice as big.
Right, and it would have to be engineered. I mean, there's a lot of different things that go into it, but you know, if somebody's just deciding they're gonna build a house three times bigger than their original cabin, and they want a variance, to me, that's unreasonable.
Well, because like you're, correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't your holding tank size go by quote like your bedroom? So if you got a one bedroom place and now you're gonna build a five bedroom, you're gonna require a bigger it holding tank, which isn't gonna be.
Right, and the holding tank is, you know, I mean, that's.
Or septic or.
Most, yeah, and the problem is some of these year round dwellings may only be able to fit a holding tank.
Right.
And so, you know, then it's problematic for us because then, you know, I have to monitor that or they have to enter into some sort of an agreement with us saying they're gonna pump the tank and this and that, but. What I originally went to Lori to, you know, I I'm asking that our departments work together on this and have restrictions. Unless they meet the setbacks, that's fine. They can do what they want, but if they don't, we're not gonna be granting variances. Unless it's an emergency, which would be failing septic system.
So what I'm hearing is we already have it in place, right?
No, for the for the septic, so the Board of Health is not granting variances down there, but Lori's department is.
The Board of Adjustment can.
Yeah. Um.
Well, they can approve it, but if if you can, if if the Board of Health can't approve it, you can't approve it either.
I mean, they could approve it, but it isn't gonna pass the Board of Health.
Right.
So then it would be kind of a no on voids.
So it's a, it's a, that's what we're worried about here. So it's, we're already going through that, so we've got, you know, some people that wanna rebuild. And they are told, well, you know, for like Lori's end, they just go through the Board of Adjustment, but then I have to do like the approval phase two, which is honestly just a waste of time. It's just because it's a waste of time. It's a way, it's it's very time consuming for each of, you know, for both of us to go in to look at a property where we know it's really not gonna fit, where we can't make it happen. But because people are allowed to go through the process, they wanna, you know, take that time to go through and pay the fees and this and that, all to come back for me to say, no, you can't. So.
So somehow we have to tie this application into this at this uh restriction, if we will. So what do you, we need to do on your end? If that's where it starts, on your end, what do we need to do?
It it kind of starts here, but it did, I mean, should or should it start there? Um, but we have a Board of Adjustment process. And, you know, part of it is, and they will ask, can it meet the sanitary setbacks? And in this case, you're right now, the preliminary things are saying that it it can't, correct?
It can't. And I mean, we could, what we could do is put it more on the homeowner's hands and say, you need to get us a recent survey of the property. You need to get us, you know, blueprints or a footprint of what that house is gonna look like.
We can.
Then it needs to go to an engineer and it needs to go at their expense. They have to take the time to go to that engineer for the septic system, and then the engineer determines if something can fit it, because there are other systems out there that we don't really have in this county that I'm not very familiar with. And I don't wanna get myself in a situation where I tell somebody they can fit something in there that they can't. So, you know, I would like it to be very specific that whether we have a policy for these subdivisions or we put a new resolution in place saying, hey, this is what is gonna have to happen if anybody wants to build over here. Something to take it off of our plate a little bit and put it back on the homeowner if they wanna go through that process or to say, no, you can't, you can't do anything.
Okay, so this, I mean, obviously, we're trying to improve that area. That's why we're doing the water system. We we've been working on for five years. So obviously, we're trying to improve that area, so we're not gonna go backwards and say, now you can put a septic tank in here when it's not, it don't pass.
Right.
So whatever, do we have legal counsel on this?
We haven't started there yet.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would suggest move forward.
Okay, alright. And just so you know, the one that we're working on, they're wanting to increase the footprint. It's not all dwelling. There's a garage attached too, so the garage adds to the footprint, which adds to.
If if it doesn't meet requirements or setbacks or minimal.
Yeah.
Your Board of Adjustment has to act and then it has to come here to act, so I expect.
No, not the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, so.
Right, which is where it gets kind of weird.
The Board of Adjustment's final.
Okay. So I was.
They can, they can approve it, but she can do not end up.
Yes, absolutely.
They'll, absolutely. They'll end up going to stuff with Lori first, and then and then it comes to me after the fact, and I'm like, eh.
But we're working ahead on this one. If we, well, we know we have to, so we do work together. There is a survey. We've actually been on site, know where the pins are, and both of us questioned it right away, you know, it.
So again, obviously, common sense sells this property owner. You're fighting enough your battle here when you explain to that property owner that hey, you could get passed by a Board of Adjustment, but public health may just shut you off.
We're.
I just, I would be wary on a permanent ban or whatever, just because as technology changes and things, you know.
Right.
Things come around and all of a sudden, um, what used to hang on a wall would be attached to a cord. That's a thin piece of plastic and a piece of glass that touches everywhere in the world. Things could evolve with the sanit, you know, the.
Oh, and it couldn't be that eventually they would get hooked up to a system.
Well, and they should, honestly, that whole subdivision should be on their own, or at least a section of those houses there that are in the really tiny lots. And, you know, that was something I actually pulled up on Beacon today to see, is there a spot that, you know, they could purchase as a community and put a, you know, some sort of a system out there, but um, and you know, the alternative systems are fine, but there's a fee for those, an annual ongoing fee, and right now, we are having problems with the alternative systems that we have out there that have, um, you know, annual fees and maintenance requirements, and we don't really have a good handle on them. And so I'm kind of to the point where we might need to step back a little bit and make it more strict, which the state is doing right now, so.
When it comes to recreational property, fees a lot of time don't factor in, you know, when they're.
Some of them have the money on recreational, other properties down there, I mean, it's the same homeowner that's owned it since the sixties and, you know, it was their dad, grandpa built the place or this or that, and it's, you know, a cabin falling in.
Part of that, the fees and all that fall back on, again, maybe Elizabeth to, well, I gotta know that yearly you're pumping your holding tank and we have to have, you know.
Right, and it could be like.
So then, and then they're not, then what's our consequences? You can't go rip out their whole, you know.
Right, well, like some of these other subdivisions, like their HOA is, you know, they say, okay, everybody's gonna get their septic tank pumped on this day, you know, every three years. And so they require to, and they have, you know, money set aside for that, and if that's what, you know, Dressler has to do, maybe it's something they'll have to do.
I don't think they have, there's no way.
They don't, and they might have to put something in place to have some control of it, but.
I would say again, move forward it uh to the best of your ability with legal counsel, I would hope.
You can, we'll, we'll, we'll bring them in, yeah.
Um, I know, I know that you both got regulations on either side of you, so let's try to put something together. Again, we're trying to improve the area. That's our whole process.
Yeah, we just don't want people to think, oh, water's coming in, then once that's in, woo, we can do whatever we want. And that's really not the case.
We've seen this snowball. We've kind of looked at it, and I've been watching this for, well, almost a year since I heard about the water coming in, and that's when I started getting people coming in. So I can see where, if like, there's three people wanting to take action and do something different, and they get the variances, they can get their septic in. The fourth person might not even be able to replace their septic because other things have encroached the property lines or where they're gonna have to put in.
And they have to understand that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they're the property owner. They have to take some responsibility here.
Well, and that's what some are talked about doing, being the first ones, so that they're the first ones in, and maybe the next ones will be the ones that get told no.
We, we're gonna have to have standard and a policy, and we're gonna have to abide by it. That's the way, that's what we have to do.
Okay. Anyway, since she was here and we were talking, I'm like, this is, this is our final update.
You gotta throw it under the tire then.
Yeah, hey, that's all right.
We didn't run over you if you heard.
No, and we kind of knew that we wanted to try to get all you guys together, and it's just.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
So one of the things too, under department update, I just wanna verify with you guys that I am not responding to anonymous complaints for nuisances.
Good.
Okay, there. Cause I've gotten one and if it's not important.
Name on it, you.
You can request remain private, but if you don't put your name on it. I used to do that when I was mayor. I would get all these anonymous letters sent to me and all that stuff. It's like, if it doesn't mean enough for you to put your name on it, you can request to remain private, but if you don't put your name on it.
How does that work if the property owner requests? Cause most of my, most of what I work with is public record. And if someone did uh submit a lawyer request, wouldn't I have to provide that?
Yeah, probably. I just, I wouldn't announce it at a meeting and all that kind of stuff.
Like right now?
Yeah.
No, again, I mean, you might wanna touch base with legal counsel to say this, we're doing this right.
Okay.
Uh, that sounds logical to me. But you still gotta put your name on something if you're gonna file a complaint. I could.
And if the neighbor wants to, yeah, if the neighbor wants to see the complaint.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, so that's the stuff that's not listed here, but um you guys were talking about Rose earlier. We had a E seventeen blows. We watched a plow truck um in front of our house. He had to back up and hit a drift four different times, and it, they did amazing. We're getting through what they had to work with, and we have nothing but kudos to say about um, the spring brick shop especially, so.
Certainly. Appreciate all their efforts.
Yep, absolutely. Alright, so Master Matrix, um, the construction evaluation, um, resolution in front of you guys. It's one that comes every year. I just asked that you were approved up through that resolution. I believe it's gonna be zero one zero.
Ten ten. I was gonna say.
Any big changes to it?
Yes, it's just.
It's a boilerplate.
Ten?
It's so, it's ten ten dash zero one dash sixteen dash twenty twenty four.
I'm starting to figure this out.
So.
I'm sucking it.
Motion second to prove resolution number ten ten dash zero one dash one six dash twenty twenty four. Matter, Master Matrix Resolution as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried.
I did have one resident come.
Yep.
Message me to make sure that we got this in before the end of the.
Really? That's awesome.
Yep.
Wow. Wow, okay. Wow, that's amazing, because I'm like, I didn't know anyone who really.
Yep.
Knew where it carries, so.
Actually, I got a text.
Really?
We communicated back and forth and uh, here you go.
Wow, I'm amazed, as you can tell. Okay, update on the comprehensive plan. Update on the comprehensive plan. So, um, we had a meeting last week with um Laura from ECIA and Dan Fox and Jack um Stubber from ECIA. Basically, we're we're rolling forward on the comprehensive plan, um. Over a half, well, half of the trap chapters are through draft and been approved and still working on, um, summer in draft, and we've been through them once, and then there's some that haven't been started at all, but that's the minimum. But we're, we're moving forward with our public meetings. Um, with, and we're still worrying our commissioned teams um with with this, the wind and um and their their troopers, so um we appreciate that. Um, we're planning a uh steering committee meeting for next month. I'm gonna say next month, yes. Um, so nothing, nothing big to report on that, but everything's moving forward.
I read parts and pieces, and it's very detailed and very well done, and uh pass our thank you on to their committee for doing their diligence here. I know it's, it's kind of really exciting work.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That's the right word.
Yeah, mind I mean. Um, alright. And I'm gonna hand you guys out some information here. Ruth compiled a list of, these are the properties in Leach Lake from group one, going back to these notices were served are put together from May first of two thousand twenty three. So, um, there's a few that have had extensions on these and, um. There's probably one, two, six, seven, six of them that had extensions. Um, some expired in uh the end of June and others um went through December, but I really think, I know the weather, this isn't the best time of year, but I think we really need to be moving forward on the court notices. And then two, you were talking about legal. I wanna just verify with the county attorney, I mean, some of the, these went out in May, and now we're gonna do the court notices without any other dialogue. So I just wanna make sure we're good, because we're, we're dragging our feet in my, in my eyes, just for lack of a, a better term that I can come up with, um.
Did you start any court on anybody yet?
Two.
Okay. Are they on here?
No, ma'am. Um, those are ones that um you guys allowed me to go through on the ones that um didn't take any action. So those were, that is the only ones we moved forward at your, under your direction.
So these are the ones that did a little bit, but then quit?
Or, yeah, there was some, you know, picked up garbage bag or whatever, or we could see some movement, or they neatened up their piles or something. Moved out one truck load, so I got twenty.
So what's the, what's the situation where we're unable to serve a notice to this property owner? What's that situation?
Um, actually, we pointed that, and we might um have found an address on that.
One down.
Third, fourth?
Fourth from the bottom, I have.
Yeah.
I think there were two listed.
Yeah.
Third one down and then.
There, there are.
We have addresses for them.
Just recent, like yesterday, um, she was able to pull up some addresses that we're gonna retry. Cause they're not the same as what we served.
Yeah, again, with with the amount of snow that we got and blowing, I I can't imagine that we can even see some of these items at this point.
Mm-hmm.
I.
When was the last check done on this two?
Two weeks ago.
On twenty sixth of December.
We were up there. Were we on there after that?
We were, but we didn't check on.
Oh, true. Okay.
The last time we had pictures is this place.
So, um, if you guys want me to do a, hey, by the way, we're gonna start court action on these properties on a certain date, just to give them another heads up. Um, I just, I just feel like on this group and the ones that went out in June, um, I think we need, it's time to move forward on these.
Yeah, this is my opinion. Uh, since you said that was December twenty sixth, that's not quite a month, but it's three weeks. So I don't know if there's any improvement. If there's no improvement, I would say, yes, we give them one more shot to say, hey, the court proceedings will start. Somebody give me a logical date.
I would say go ahead and start. They've had since May.
Mm-hmm.
Last extension on here was in September.
On some of them, yeah.
They haven't taken the initiative from September to December twenty sixth to move forward.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I guess we don't know that, yeah, we don't know what, you know, to to twenty sixth we do, yeah.
The whole time, all we asked them is to show improvement. They show us progress, and if they fail to do so, every extension we've granted was for thirty days, and we said, as long as they continue to show improvement, we've been more than helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Um, at some point in time, you gotta. At some point in time, you gotta put the foot down and, and. It gets to the point, yeah, it's crappy, yeah, there's a lot of snow, it's gonna be a lot harder, but you've had eight months. To proceed. And we hear all the, the stories with the circumstances, why we couldn't, why we can't. I think at some point you gotta proceed. Coordinate with the county attorney and see how and what he wants to do to act being that he's got um significant court bucket. In the next couple of months, but I would say coordinate it.
And he told me one other time, it's like he doesn't want more than, um, like, we're going at a time. So we just.
We don't like to dictate the terms and pace of our job, but sometimes that's not possible.
Well, and part of it is, they know what their caseload is too, so we could, we just stagger the dates into different weeks and not all at the same, during the same week.
Again, we'd love to dictate the pace of our job, but sometimes we can't. And as things come up and need to be taken care of, they need to be taken care of.
There is, you were talking about progress. I have reached out to. A board member at Leach Lake for some assistance. I, I'm very careful, I, I'm one of those trust but verify. And I've been told that one of the properties in question. Isn't necessarily. Moving things out and also more steps coming in and moving out and coming in and moving out.
So is it visible, you're saying, or not visible, or is it, again, I can't dictate if somebody lives inside their home, but.
Oh, this is outside, no, this is outside, um, so they're looking for. That board, there's board members with cameras that would be able to tell me if more junk's moving in and I'm gonna.
At some point in time, I would. Expect the property owners association. To do their own thing, they can't just defer to the county every time, because they don't wanna be the bad guy. Or whatever, because if they don't do anything, it's kind of a joke.
I, I believe there is progress being made. With them, and I know they have violations notices out to different properties, even ones that we've cleared off. Because they did it and now they're back into violation, we, we cleared them off and now they're back. And the board's working on different ones and the board is understanding now that they need to lead by example. Um, there were board members in violation.
I was gonna say, it makes it tough to enforce it if you're not doing it yourself and.
Yeah, so they, they now realize that they need to lead by example and I've even had conversations with some of the board members that. Were in violation and are working on. Enforcing violations and uh that they needed to be of every approach.
Or is it logical to give it to the association this list also? To see if they want to pursue.
I don't have a problem with that.
Uh, I think they can't just alleviate themselves of this.
Responsibility.
They help and make it encourage it, I mean, their inactivity is kind of the reason we're at this place.
And a lot of them are the previous board members that carry a lot of that culpability. So, yeah, I don't have a problem sharing that with the board and letting them know where. All right, and let's see if I had anything else here. So basically, don't just talk to the legal first and see how we wanna move forward, come back to you guys.
Proceed.
Please, proceed forward, if legal says, yeah, we can take. Move forward, then move forward.
Can I be ready to go with group two also, even though it's gonna be a lot, like you said, we can't always.
The ball was rolling, you can't wait, it, it might take a year to get group one all the way down.
Well, I mean, to get them at least filed and going.
Yeah, I can.
Get them done before we start filing and rolling on group two.
So again, the next two months is gonna be tough, well, hopefully not, but might be a little tough.
Yeah, they've had since May though.
I know.
Well, I'm talking about group two. February first, that's gonna be a little.
You know, and maybe.
Maybe it's the best year we have, I don't know.
Yeah, and I just think, you know, the county, the, the association has cried wolf. So many times over the last years that they're, they're calling our bluff because. We haven't led by example in the past.
Oh, let's move forward.
All right, I'll tuck to John and see, just, and if there's any concerns, we'll bring them back to you. Thank you, guys.
Thought you had your support team up here with you, but you know.
She's taking notes anyway, um, yeah. Thank you, guys.
Okay, we're moving right along.
Lisa. Good morning, good morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the January ninth, twenty twenty four board vote proceedings, that's written by auditor Smith. And authorize publication in the official newspapers, so.
Motion second to approve the board meeting from eighth or January ninth. And published as presented, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve an invoice for labor only to S C I communications. For sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-six cents for wiring at the Jackson County Law Enforcement Center.
Motion second to approve the invoice as presented, all those in favor say aye. Did I say that right? Did I say I'll oppose, that's all in favor, correct? Opposed, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing. In the amount of one million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-two cents.
Motion second to approve claims of one million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents as presented. Twenty-two cents. All, all those in favor say aye.
And there was a lot of bridge repair on that.
There was actually seven hundred thousand in bridge repair. And.
Construction for the jail.
Jail construction cause, yep, yep.
Motion carried.
As you know, you've heard me talk about, I've been working on insurance, um, so today I need a motion to approve the chair and auditor signatures. On the twenty twenty-four Iowa Communities Assurance Pool Rating Supplement and Member Proxy.
Motion second to approve the insurance as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Um, that's all that I have for the board.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. All right, calendar for this week. Um, this afternoon at four o'clock is a McCooka River Watershed Beddishman Authority Executive Committee meeting um by Zoom for Don. Tonight at five P M will be the Conservation Board meeting in Hurstville, and then usually goes to those. Um, at six o'clock tonight is Jackson County Economic Alliance, and I think they've changed that to a Zoom-only meeting. Um, Kelly just sent a message for Don. And at seven o'clock tonight is the Board of Health meeting in the community room or by Zoom for NIN. Tomorrow, Wednesday, January seventeenth. Nin and Don will be in El Tuna. Um, attending the Isaac University program out there for a couple of days. Um, and tomorrow on Wednesday runs, starts at one o'clock, we have to run until eight at night. Um, I have on the agenda tentatively a Jackson County Security Committee meeting, but I have no confirmation of that. I was not able to verify that that meeting was gonna be tomorrow. Um, at five o'clock tomorrow is ECIA Council Meeting um in Dubuque or by Zoom for Mike. Thursday, January eighteenth, Dan and NIN will still be in El Tuna, that's an eight A M to five P M day. At nine o'clock that morning, um, Mike will be on the Just Talk Show on KMAQ. At six o'clock that night is a Limestone Bluffs R C and D meeting by Zoom for Don. That's the regular meeting and then at seven o'clock, they start their annual meeting, which is for everybody, um, also by Zoom. On Friday, January nineteenth, I don't have anything for you, I do plan to be out of the office that day. Monday, January twenty-third, at nine thirty A M is a P E I meeting for Mike in Dubuque or by Zoom. At three o'clock that afternoon is a Regional Governing Board meeting in Davenport for Jack, and I think NIN's the alternate there. Four P M that afternoon on Monday is an Early Childhood Iowa uh council meeting. Um, in DuWitt, um, for NIN. At six o'clock that night is the Jackson County Board of Adjustment meeting for any of you that want to attend that. And at seven o'clock that night is a Together We Build Steering Committee meeting for NIN.
There's a Together We Build Advisory Board meeting at five.
Twenty-second on a Sunday? Oh, the twenty-second, okay, okay, five. Okay, and I'm not in the loop on those, yes, obviously, so, okay.
They were supposed to be last Monday, but, or Thursday, sorry, but with the snow and everything.
Yeah, wasn't a good day for that. Okay, um, our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, January twenty-third at nine A M. Um, at the end of that meeting, we will have a, a union negotiation session with the Teamsters for all of you. And at six o'clock that night will be a zoning commission meeting um in the community room or by Zoom for any of you that want to attend that.
That's it.
I have one little bit of business, uh, we, I'm looking to set the date. With the annual meeting of the Green Island Drainage District. And um, I'm proposing that we do that on February thirteenth, that Tuesday at eleven A M. I'm looking for a motion to set that.
Thirteenth, February.
Be right after our regular meeting that day.
Motion second to approve the meeting for the Green Island Drainage District for Tuesday, February thirteenth. At eleven A M, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed, motion carried.
That is all I had for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Long list. Reports on any boards or commissions, we did have the R T A meeting, uh, most all were there or in some shape or form. Uh, they're still in search of a, a director, so that's ongoing. Um, as far as the. I guess the operation itself is going smoothly, they had a good year and uh expect another good year, so. Yeah, they always looking for drivers and they wanted to be known that them drivers, you know, you get paid, so if you're interested at all. And, and doing a little.
Where are they looking for drivers at?
All over.
Yeah, and you can kind of pick your times, you know, so.
You can pick your times and they will train you if you don't have a C D O, they will train you.
We had a municipal league and that uh annual meeting and we went through the budget and that budget was passed. And had, again, it was a miserable night and we had a small turnout, but uh. Yeah, so it's, it's running along, uh, weren't you management working on a new? Plan, uh, what's the name of the plan, um? Register response. Disaster plan, it's gotta be renewed every so often, so they're working on that. Think that's all I have.
As you said too, last week that Together We Build Board, it was, it was supposed to be on the eleven, it was postponed till the twenty seconds. And my estimate, I was supposed to have uh water management authority on a Zoom call, but it was postponed due to the snow. So, I didn't realize snow could affect the Zoom meeting, but uh it'll be this afternoon at four o'clock.
Maybe, uh.
That was a lot of things, a lot of.
Maybe it was zooming from the rural where they didn't get good coverage because they couldn't view the tower or.
I don't know. It mostly consists of city managers and supervisors and, well, they thought maybe we would be out there in snow, but uh.
You're not the one.
We'll have a report next week.
Yeah, I didn't have too much, I just had Grant Wood singing Byway.
Now, that is disaster preparedness, you know, is that the hazard mitigation thing that?
They still working on it, I took the survey yesterday, but uh. Yeah, there's still work, he's working on that and he gets notice from the state for that.
Do you have any, are we any farther along with uh nine-one-one advisory board as far as? Dispatch or we heard anything more with that, or is it?
The communication board?
We communicate, that's it.
I don't know if they've set another meeting.
I have, no, I, I am not, I don't think they have another meeting since their last one, no, so they're still. Anything else before the board this morning? I'd like to throw a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried, meeting adjourned.